Everybody out and there's agendas over there if anyone needs a copy. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of October 26th.
I move we approve the minutes of October 26th.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have a conditional use permit for a major home occup- Could I have, could it, keep your voices down for just a moment, we'll keep going with this. We have a conditional use permit for a major home occupation B for landscaping and snow removal.
As an introduction to that, Chair and Planning Commission members, we've got a proposal before you here off 1698 South 300 East. You can see there in your packets and on the map, the location of the house on the south end of town. Mr. Nash is applying for the home occupation, has a truck and utility trailer essentially that he keeps equipment in to go out on site and do yard care and snow removal type services. Having visited with him and spoken with him on the ordinance and with the understanding of the business, it's a passenger sized truck and it's a fairly good sized trailer when I put up the notice sign. But he's got a space on the north side of the home where he says generally can keep, keep that in long term, hopes to have a pad board where those will be parked more frequently. But ultimately, based on the conversation and observation, staff's recommended approval of the conditional use as proposed. A lot of bodies here tonight, I believe he's available in the audience, but if you'd like to speak with him or myself, I'd be happy to take any questions at this point.
Okay, would Mr. Nash like to come up? Any question?
Really about the only question, is it just one plow?
Yes, and I store it in my garage in the summertime.
Okay, so just plow, and then you probably got a trailer that you have all snow blowers and other equipment on?
Yeah, a 12-foot trailer, which I could put on the side of my house, and then my truck, and then all my equipment sits in the garage.
Okay, thanks.
Do you do residential and commercial or?
Um, I only have three residentials that I'm gonna be doing, but yeah, I just try to stick to more to commercial.
Good, okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we grant a conditional use permit for our major home occupation B landscaping and snow removal for Zachary Nash at 1698 South 300 West, or excuse me, 300 East.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Have another conditional use permit for farm animals at 836 West Charles Drive.
And again, as introduction to this item, Mr. Munson has requested this conditional use permit specifically for chickens. Our office was made aware of it, apparently this happens occasionally, some chickens hatch, they start crowing, and neighbors heard about it, so they called us out and we verified they were there. Got in touch with Mr. Munson and he was very receptive, reached out to us soon to let us know that he didn't know it was an issue. He's since disposed of them and didn't know he needed the permit, so was happy to come in and get that approval in place. The conditions on site and observations and meetings with them, everything seems to be in good order, as is. Based on that, staff's recommended approval of the permit, based on the restrictions of the ordinance without additional conditions.
Okay, Mr. Munson here. Okay.
Sounds straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward, I don't think he's the only one that didn't realize he needs a permit.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we grant a conditional use permit for farm animals for Kevin Munson at 836 West Charles Drive.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay. We have an amendment of the conditional use permit for Mountain High School at 490 South 500 East to remodel the school in site.
Okay, so, Mountain High School, which is right in between Davis High School and the DTC, or Davis Tech, as I believe it's called now. Currently has, you can see here on the aerial imagery, many portable classrooms behind the main building. In fact, I believe if not all their classes are held in portable buildings. And so the school district is moving forward with the project, if approved, to eliminate all the existing portables and build permanent classroom space. So you can see here on the site plan what the new site would look like. They'd actually be removing a section of the front of the existing building, adding additional parking stalls within that area, and then adding two wings to the back where the classrooms would be accommodated. If you head to the next picture that shows that, and so you can see, there's a lot of pretty pictures that, kind of how it looks, the landscaping and on site, and probably be some, an additional 56 parking stalls added to the site for a total of 95. Otherwise, the intensity and impact on the area ultimately should not change, they're actually not increasing any amount of classroom size. My note I got from the developer, or excuse me, the architect that's designing it, is that it is not designed to hold additional students, but rather just to create the spaces necessary to accommodate the students they've already been taking. So, we expect as, at least as a staff, it appears to be a good thing to, I don't want to take care of the building, but also make improvements to the site, as we know there are parking issues in the area, so at least won't exacerbate that. Hopefully it will help mitigate some of the existing issues. Some of the other pictures, Andy, if you want to flip forward on those, show some of the architecture and what's proposed for the project. Forward through a few at a time.
Well, what's the current population or capacity, how many students are there? Because that's not changing, but how many, how many are there now, do you know?
Yeah, we've got the school district representation here, as well as the architecture groups, I'll let them answer that. They have told me at one point, I forget the exact student body, so I'll have them represent that, if you'd like them to come up.
Hello, current capacity is about 300 students, it will be maintained with the improvements. Thank you.
Are you the architect?
I am, Scott Leder with MHTN.
Thank you, I wanted to tell you, you did a nice job, it makes our job a lot easier when we have all of this before us. Anything else that we may need to know about that? Looks like the siding is gonna be rock?
It'll be a mixture of concrete masonry, so consistent with the materials on site, as well as some synthetic wood materials. A little bit more durable with a high school product, but it'll warm up that texture and that elevation for you, so.
What's your schedule?
Anticipate shovel on the ground next March, and we would roll through construction of about August 2019 is what we're anticipating right now.
So people will still go there for school during the construction?
That's correct, yeah. The plan of attack is to actually relocate some of the portables and some other district property portables onto Davis High School, and that school would remain in operation. Construction would happen on the backside of the building, and then once that's complete, there'll be some shifting around, and the new building will be opened.
This is part of Davis School District, right?
That's correct, yes.
Alternative high school, so drives kids from all over the county.
I'm sure it'll help to have more parking.
Yeah, although these students, a lot of them don't drive, a lot of them take UTA to get there, so it's, but parking in that area, as you know, is, can't happen.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll help.
It looks wonderful.
It does, yeah, the Chair's right on this, it's the work that you guys put into it, gave a really good visual of it, and we're able to really, really see it. I think it's a huge improvement over what's currently there, and will be a lot more conducive for learning for the kids that are going there.
Just as a clarification to the commission, so staff has done a pretty significant amount of review on this, based on the details that have been provided. The recommendation was that we just verify a few things for the building permit process, and that's kind of a little bit of a mislead, or the school district doesn't technically pull building permits from the city, they work with the state and the district on those permits. But we do work with them on the site plan and utility process on it, so we would just verify some of the remaining details, the technical aspect of the construction before letting them go. But otherwise, staff felt good to recommend approval.
And landscaping and all of that would be entered into that. Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the amending conditional use permit for Mountain High School for a major remodel for Davis High School District at 490 South 500 East.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a public hearing. Well, if you want to introduce that, and I'll open it up.
Request is to do a lot line adjustment on an existing subdivision located at, address shown. Property's down off Burton Lane, there's a private lane just on the south side of the road, was developed some years ago, most of the homes were built. As you can see on the map, the one lot remains vacant. These two property owners have mutually agreed to exchange some property, and they're going through the process. Zoom in on those lots, see the existing property line is this line, the new proposed line is here. Leaves the existing buildings well in compliance, lots are oversized to start with, so they both very much remain in compliance with square footage requirement for the zone. We don't see any problems, utilities are already installed, so we see this is pretty straightforward, simple lot line adjustment.
So this doesn't impact really anything other than lot adjustment?
Neither.
We still do need to have the public hearing if anybody wishes to speak to it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter, if anyone would like to come forward. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And open it up for discussion or a motion.
I'm ready to move.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the Bear, we recommend approval for the Bear Creek Hollow Cluster Subdivision amended preliminary and final plat approval for Spencer Prince at 1643 South 150 West.
Second. Aye.
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 Great. Okay, we have another public hearing. Go ahead.
I'm sure this one will be every much as simple as that one was. Several months ago, you may recall, we reviewed property down on the South Main Street and approved a rezone to allow a assisted living center on this property. At that time, there was discussion that the remainder of the property would be forthcoming with a subdivision plat. Well, this is the plat that was discussed at that point. The submitted plat shows seven lots, including one lot that already contains an existing home on it. The request is to connect the two roads with a private street with a kind of a double cul-de-sac in the middle with a gate in between. That's an attempt, as you may recall, when we reviewed the assisted living, there was concerns about additional traffic in the two stub roads on either side. Concern about traffic impacts for those, so this was an attempt by the developer to mitigate those impacts. As the staffs reviewed it, they're not in favor of a private road, fire department doesn't believe that will meet the requirements for the assisted living center. Engineering agrees that this would be best served as a public street with no barriers. Other than that, the lot's well conformed to the zoning, both for square footage and frontage. So, that's the report.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and if you would like to step up, state your name, and leave your comments, it'll be about three minutes.
My name's Dave Whitaker, I am the applicant, and I live in the home that is shown there. And as Andy said, we tried to listen to the residents of the surrounding community there. We did originally plan on having that be a through public street. At the time that the Symphony Homes developed the portion to the east of us, we were, we were told two things. One is that you'll need to help us find out how we're gonna connect this temporary cul-de-sac, and two, when we're done, you will want to move. And they were right on, on both cases. So at this point, I'm forced to make that decision, it's not something I wanted to do originally. But now that I'm at to that point, I originally did have a through street, which I knew would pass ordinance. Since then, nearly every one of those surrounding families has told us that they would really rather not have a through street. This is really the only way that I can find that I can produce connectivity between the two cul-de-sacs and be able to still allow emergency vehicle access to both sides. And still provide what I think is a, what I think would be a really great addition actually to that community. The homes we plan to build, they will be nice homes, it's not unlike some of the other communities that we have in the city, which are gated communities. Only difference is this has only one gate, it will appear to be a gated community from either side. The siren is, or the gate is siren activated, it'll operate whenever an emergency vehicle has to pass through, but it will stop the, stop the flow of through traffic, as just public traffic would be. I appreciate any of your, any of your consideration you can give us in this matter, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Robin Tolman. Looking at the staff report that was online, Mr. Whitaker did submit the request for this rezone of his property to include a private lane with the gate. The road is a given, we know that we're gonna have a road across there no matter what, so that will be connected. But this private lane would be gated with that siren activated opener for emergency vehicles to accommodate fire, ambulance, police, whatever needed to be done there. It would not be a through street for the public, and that is what we are here requesting tonight, that's what all these people here are supporting. The gate, I guess it boils down to the gate. The recommendation by the staff is to eliminate the gate and to make it a through street, we understand that, that's Mr. Thompson's job. It's his responsibility to stick to the city plan, and we expect nothing less of him, so that's great. But, that is why we have these hearings, these public hearings, that's why we have the options to rezone properties. That's why the city invites input from residents of the city on zoning that impacts them, and we live in America, where the voice of the people matters, and it will always matter in a free society. So the issue then is the gate. And in the staff report here in the third paragraph, it says the fire department has indicated that the proposal won't meet the minimum fire requirements. What the minimum code, that the minimum code is not being met. And I'm not sure why they haven't shared that with Mr. Whitaker, as he's been submitting plans to the city, what that code is, so that he can meet that. But whatever that minimum code is, please have them share that with him, so that he can adapt his plans. The staff report also says that the gate was proposed to address concerns of residents regarding the traffic, true. That's what everybody wants there, that would make everybody really happy that lives in those surrounding subdivisions on both sides. And we are the ones who are gonna be impacted by a through street. There are other gated communities in Kaysville, like Mr. Whitaker said, and whether it's for privacy or safety or other reasons, I mean, that doesn't matter, this is a very similar situation. I think what we have here, can I ask them to stand up if they're here for, to support the gate? So that you can see how many there are? These are the neighbors in those two cul-de-sacs that-
Thank you.
Anyway, I spent the afternoon going around to all of my neighbors and having them sign, I couldn't get hold of two of them, so I don't have their signatures. And one person has only moved in in the last few weeks, so they don't really know what's going on. But, can I give that to you, so you can see it? Thank you. These are all the people that want the gate on that road. I think what we have here is the voice of the people. All these people who bought homes here knowing that emergency vehicles would have to go up Laurelwood and up and around to get to their homes, and they bought those homes being okay with that. And now we have an improved situation where emergency vehicles can come up 650 South and get to them a little, a little quicker. Even if the fire truck had to wait for an extra fraction of time for that gate to open all the way, these people have already made the choice to wait for the gate to open by supporting it. And they have the right to choose that. Also, they continue to choose by being here tonight to support it. I think reaching any of the homes above Whisper Creek subdivision, I don't, I think you can see it right at the very far right top corner there on that map, where Whisper Creek subdivision starts. It's where all the white empty lots are on that picture. From there, down around Laurelwood, or there, down around and back up and through our subdivision, it's about sixes in time and distance. And so, there's not, the impact is mostly for those two subdivisions. I know that the fire department in this staff report is asking for an unobstructed road. The people are asking for a gated road. That road is a through street, the fire department and any other emergency equipment will always have access to the road. So in essence, the road is not obstructed or off limits to emergency vehicles, only the through traffic. I think we all respectfully request that, that those who are making these choices on our behalf have an open mind and a willingness to consider the needs of these two neighborhoods who are directly impacted as it concerns this private road versus a through street. I personally think that this can be a win-win situation for everybody involved. City gets a connected road, the fire department and other public service works have access, unrestricted access to that gate and that road anytime they want it. And so, I think we would respectfully request that those who oppose the gate at this point in time, maybe take another look at this request with an open mind and, and maybe-
Okay.
With the concern of these people. I think it's a reasonable and viable option for-
I do have just a quick question for, are you the spokesperson, are you representing the whole group?
No.
Okay.
I'm sure that they'll have thoughts too, but-
I was just curious, because you had them stand and you had your-
Right, that's what I was assuming.
I was wondering, so.
I talked to everybody in the last two days, and yes.
In reference to that though, for those of, the rest of you who are here, if you echo her thoughts, simply come up, state your name, and say, "I wholeheartedly agree," unless you have something new to add, otherwise we will be here all night.
I'm sorry about that, but-
We've done that before.
I just, I just want you to know that as neighborhood, we are completely united, every single neighbor on both sides of the gate, in favor of this.
Let us hear from them.
Hi, Perry Oaks, I live up in the Whisper Creek subdivision, and I wholeheartedly agree with what Robin said, but I have two points. One would be on a variation. I spent 27 years active duty air force and working for the federal government. There are more variations than there are regulations, and there's more regulations than would fill this room. Everywhere you turn, there's always a variation. And we, I understand when you talk city planners and others who want the orderliness, but you go around the city of Kaysville, and there's variations on this exact thing we're asking for on cul-de-sacs that don't go through. The other would be on the gate. I have a son-in-law who's a fireman in Oregon, and he's on his second city up there, and so I called him and just asked him about it. Asked him how they deal with gated communities, if they have, and I said, "We're not," you know, and he's been to our house, and he said, he said, "You know, we deal with gated communities all the time." And some of them actually have lock boxes outside the gate that we then have to get out, unlock it, and open the gate. Said, "We deal with it, it's not a problem." And I explained the optical sensors we would have, the gate would open, he goes, "Oh, those are wonderful." He goes, "I, as a fireman, wouldn't see any problem with that at all." And so, just a different perspective, you know, and, there you go. But I wholeheartedly support Robin, and she could be the spokesman, because she's more well-versed than any of us.
Thank you.
My name is Ann Shun, I live in the single house on Main Street, right next to what will be the development of the assisted living place, and I wholeheartedly support what all of these other neighbors feel their needs.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Keister, I live on Main Street, 673 Main Street, so just across the field from Ann. I too, wholeheartedly agree with everything Robin has said. I also want to thank Mr. Whitaker publicly for being willing to make this adjustment from what his original plan was. Just a couple of things to add, safety is a big thing of mine. I moved onto Main Street, I understood it was a busy street, but I also understood that we had a safe cul-de-sac for my kids to ride bikes, to walk, to play, to do all of those things. I did the math, we have approximately 30 children that live in that cul-de-sac right there. When you add in potential grandchildren who come to visit and play in that same neighborhood, that number can swell as high as 50 on any given day. To add traffic coming through there is, essentially have nowhere else to go, because we can't get to the hollow, there's no sidewalk. Or else you have children riding bikes on a busy Main Street where the speed limit's 40, and today I sat out there for an hour and clocked with my radar gun, and the average speed was 47 miles per hour today, when kids are walking home from school. Laurelwood is the same problem, lots of traffic down that road, the speed limit there is 25, and I sat there for a half an hour today, and the average mile per hour is 34. 10 miles per hour, 9 miles per hour higher than what it is, and 20% of those were more than 10 miles an hour over. Sorry, I said that wrong, 20% of that was 10 and over, 10% of that of the total was 20 miles an hour or over. So 45 miles an hour down Laurelwood, where there's children there as well. So, safety is a big concern of mine, and you've got a busy Nichols Road, you've got a busy Burton Lane, you've got a busy Laurelwood, all crammed in there together. And to add another street that's gonna have through traffic coming through there regularly, making it very difficult to get onto Main Street, is just gonna add to the problem. So, safety is a big concern of mine, and I fully support this gate to be there, as long as it is closed all the time. I do not want it to be a situation where it's a gate that is installed and is always up, allowing traffic to go through. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Barlow, and my husband Meyer, we do, we're very emotional about this, because we've had some, some hard things that are in our family, like other families in that area. We have, I have a handicapped sister that's disabled, has been since she was 17 years old, a drunk driver, she and my mom, and my mom was killed. So we've taken care of Sid for all these years, and she has been fortunate enough to live with us and live in a private street where she can ride her electric vehicle at times. She's not able to ride on the sidewalk, because she drives it off, it's very heavy, she drives it off into the lawn, or she goes into the places that she can't get to. So we, we felt secure enough for her to ride out in the road, in the mornings when it's, it's quiet. And also, we've got Jake, which I'm sure they'll be coming up, but there's Jake across the street that is severely handicapped, and he's outside wandering all the time. We have to watch Sydney, and we have to watch for Jake, because he gets, he visits everybody, he's so friendly. And then we have Kent in the wheelchair back there that has been there for a long time. And we're, all three of us, we're on the end home just before you go into Whitaker's lane, and then Jake's right across from us, and then Kent is right across the street on the other side. other side. And so, we have three people, disabled people, that, that are happy that they can go outside in this safe environment, and we're happy that they can. It would be really hard to have that a through street, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know how we can end this real fast. All we have to do is have the planning commission say, "We're, we want a gate." We could end this real, right now. Or, or we might be here a while. My name is Greg...
That sounds like blackmail, I think.
No, I, I'm not trying to blackmail you. I'm just trying to get this over.
[inaudible]
Yes. Yeah. So, everybody is in favor, and I would just hope that...
Greg, what was your last name?
Oh, Greg Hill.
Oh, Hill.
Yep. And I live right on Whisper Creek Drive. We were given assurances from Symphony when we moved in that that was not going to be a through street. And I don't want to, I mean, that doesn't bind you by any means, but I think it, a lot of us bought our homes and, you know, built with that understanding that we were going to have a, a private street, and we would like to keep it that way. And we just hope that you will forward on our thoughts to the city council. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Michael Sheetz. I live 594 East, 655 South, in that same neighborhood. It, it seems to me part of the concern is a through street to the Whisper Creek development and making it more available for access to fire, fire or emergency personnel or truck. Currently, I imagine that the city does consider the current Whisper Creek development safe. Otherwise, they wouldn't have allowed those houses to be built in the way that they've been built. So, we're really talking now about whether it can be made more safe. And with all the, the suggestions and support for David Whitaker's plan of using a gate, it seems like that would be a reasonable alternative than to having a through street. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Kathy Moffett. And back in 19, oh, in the early 90s, my father and Kent were doing work on the Sheetz home, on this, I can't remember what they did with that, but it was when it was owned by Calder, I think was the name. Is that right, David Calder's? And they didn't have the money to pay my dad and Kent for the work done. The lot that we are living on right now belonged to Calder's, and they gave that to my dad and Kent for payment. And Kent was not in this condition at that time. He was in an accident where it paralyzed him, severe head injury. And he's blind in one eye and partially blind in the other cat, here and one ear, and deaf and, you know, just opposite. But he goes out, he hasn't done it for a couple of years because he fell another time and had to have a leg amputated. But he is, was, at one time, the neighborhood garbage collector and footerouter and that for our neighborhood. And Kent goes out wheeling too. And his eyesight's not good, and he can't hear. So, if a vehicle came up the road and started honking, he wouldn't see it. He'd probably think they're waving at him, and he'd wave back. But I totally support the gate.
Thank you.
My name's Guy Slater. I live at 582 East, 655 South, on the north end of the cul-de-sac. Luckily, my kids are moved out, and I have no kids to worry about in the neighborhood. But that being said, one thing that we're, that we're trying to work and it's brought up to is to increase the safety factor by having that a through street. On the occasion that there is a need for an emergency vehicle, Nancy brought to point, we have Jake Wall, we have Ken, and we have Sid, that don't have the cognitive ability to understand that it will no longer be a safe place for them to go out into the street and do what they do. Everybody in that community knows about Jake and Sid and Ken, and we watch out for them. You know, you know that if you go up there and you take a right-hand turn by the Walls house, Jake's going to be there asking for a Dr. Pepper, and he's not going to get out of the road until you give him a Dr. Pepper. That's just the way it is. I understand as a person that if that is a through street, that it'll be more traffic, and it'll, you know, I need to be aware of that. These people don't have that ability to be aware of that, and it will definitely impact their life. And you'll basically be taking Jake and Sid and Ken and making them prisoners in their own home, in their own home. They won't be able to go out inside and enjoy the lifestyle they have for as long as they live there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicky Pasqua, and I live up on Whisper Creek as well. I completely agree with all of the work that Robin's done and the comments that she's made, and 100% support putting a gate there. Again, when we moved in, we were, bought the property and felt that that was the place we wanted to be because it was a quiet cul-de-sac area, and was not notified or told that that would ever be a through street. Obviously, things can change, and we understand that there were certain ordinances that have been in place for quite some time on that. However, as I recall, when we first started meeting about this, in order to put through the assisted living, the comment that was made by the council was that our goal and our job is to look at each case individually and to place value upon each for their own merits. And so, that's what we're requesting that you do here, as this has changed, the conditions, existing conditions for those neighborhoods that have been there and, and the families that lived there for over 30 years have not changed. But putting in a through street would have a great impact upon all of them, both in their safety, upon the noise, upon just things that happen when the roads get busy. And when we're talking about safety and the concerns of the fire department being able to get through there, I understand that that is a concern. However, as we know, up on Whisper Creek, the fire department can get through there, or we wouldn't have our homes where they are now if that was an issue. So, that's kind of a mute point for us there. They, they do have access. I have a fire hydrant in my front lawn, so I know it's very effective for them to get to that one. And the thing that we haven't discussed, which I'm very concerned about the safety, we don't have children, and up in our upper neighborhood, there aren't a lot of children. This is more for the existing neighbors that have been there. But we also have gone through several meetings where we approved to redevelop and rezone for an assisted living facility for up to 75 beds, which will be on the other side of that subdivision that we're trying to put in. So, when you add those 75 assisted living people who have a lot of conditions that make them not in the best place, to be concerned about them being out there, worried about fire departments, through streets, things coming through there, you add a big risk for them. Not to mention, when they have visitors that come and bring their grandchildren, they're going to be playing out there. I had my mom in assisted living, and, and I know when families came, they'd bring their kids. Well, the kids get bored talking to grandma, and so, they're out playing. And that will increase the amount of kids in that area. So, to put a through street, you now have created a danger for the existing neighborhoods and a danger for that assisted living facility, the residents and the visitors that are coming in there. So, I would just like you to consider that as well, and to look at this upon its own merits, which I think clearly show the greater concern, and the best option for safety is a siren activated gate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alan Anderson, and I live at 668 South, 510 East, and I wholeheartedly agree.
Good job.
Get that man a Dr. Pepper.
John Jensen, 481 East, 650 South. Really, I, I hope you're hearing what our neighbors are saying. These are some really good compelling reasons to, to make some exceptions here, some variation. I wholeheartedly support it. Dave's doing a great thing here. Please help him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Purdy. I live at 656 Whisper Creek Drive. And my husband, Mark, and I would just like to say that we wholeheartedly support the, what Robin has said. We are, and what everyone else has said. We think they're all great ideas, and we very much agree with them about keeping that a private road. We'd also like to publicly thank Mr. Whitaker for his work in trying to help our neighborhood to stay safe for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heidi Nettleton. I actually live above Whisper Creek, and I'm probably the only one who doesn't have an opinion on the gate. And I don't want to talk about the gate, I want to talk about another issue that's probably being overlooked by the gate. And I can't really tell from the plan, so my issue is access to the hollow. We have this great trail system through the hollow. I don't know if you guys have ever been through there. Really, the only access points are at the top and the very bottom, except for those who live along the hollow. And I'm just, I'm, I can't really tell from the plan, so I don't know if Mr. Whitaker could answer this question, but I would love to see, I know that the roads aren't going to connect to Main Street, but it would be great, I think, for all the community, the people who don't live against the hollow, if they had a walking path from Main Street up through there. So, I guess my question is, was there, is there any, is there any plan for that? Is there part of, do the sidewalks connect in there? I can't really, I can't tell from this.
Let me answer that now.
Yeah.
Maybe he can answer that, too.
The current plan, there is, well, with this subdivision, it doesn't abut Main Street in any location, so there is no sidewalk connecting this development to Main Street. They will be required to put the sidewalk across the front edge of their development, and we have a grant that will build the sidewalk down to Nichols Road. So, Main Street sidewalk will be completed.
But they'll still really no...
There'll be no connection from the east down to Main Street.
So, you would still go 650 East and around, and you can get through whether or not the gate's there or not.
Yeah, that would be...
Okay. All right.
That's going to be a big help, that sidewalk. Is it a three-foot or four-foot, do you know?
It's a four-foot sidewalk. That's what's existing on...
On the both side where it disconnects. Thank you.
Public hearing is still open.
Can you enlarge that picture again? Yeah. So, I'm Brian Wall, and actually, I'm Jake's dad, and we will hopefully, he's going to be coming. He still may be showing up, but anyway, he's 25 years old, basically was born in the home. So, I live on the corner, right there where 550 is, going down to 650 on that, basically. Next one, next one over, right there, that's me. Reason I wanted to have that enlarged is that is a very steep corner, meaning that you don't have very much vision. If you were coming up that street and going right in front of my home and heading down like into the Whitakers, it's, you cannot see coming around that corner, going up east, then coming south. You cannot see very well those kids, others that are out there. In fact, what I have been doing is encouraging all those that come to my home to park up there on 650, excuse me, 665, you know, that cul-de-sac right there, up there in that, next to the Barlow's and, and the home there. So, that's where I do because it's very, very hard to see the, you know, as you go around that corner. So, my concern would be if you have people coming down Whisper Creek, coming across where the Whitakers are, coming across there past the birds of my home, and they're going quite fast, you are not going to be able to see the kids that are down there playing on that 650 street. We've actually had one young man already hit on that street at 650 with the little vehicles that we do have, you know. So, we have a lot of activity that's going on in that. But that, that's a big concern for me. That's a very steep corner right there as cars go, coming and going. I appreciate Mr. Keister and his, you know, vision of seeing how fast vehicles are going. And I can tell you, I've stood out there before and told people I would go like this as kids are coming down. But my son, Jake, he certainly likes to go and visit the neighbors, walk across the street. We've told him many times, watch the cars, and, but I can just tell you, a car can come by there and very easily hit him. And, but, and as well as the other individuals that we've talked about. So, I absolutely support this and hope that you will really evaluate, you know, the safety of, of all that are involved here. We moved here with the intention, we saw that it was an opportunity to be closed off, and we wouldn't have the vehicles coming through there that possibly happened. So, anyway, appreciate the work that Mr. Whitaker has done, as well as Robin Tolman. And so, anyway, I just thought I would share that with you. That, that is a steep corner, so it's, if you drive up there, you just can't see, you know, around that corner at all, so...
Thank you. Thanks.
My name's Dino Pasqua. I live up on Whisper Creek. Just, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said in favor of the gate. The one thing I want to add is it seems like the fire department versus the residents seems to be the issue. And when we really think about how often the fire department would use that gate versus the daily traffic that would be through on that road, there's no comparison. I can't, I mean, our hopes are that the fire department's never in the neighborhood. We know that might happen occasionally, but far and few between versus the daily use of the road. So, I'm, again, I'm in total agreement of the gate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live up on Whisper Creek as well. I just want to echo that I agree with everything that's been said today. I do want to echo what Mr. Wall said in regards to sort of the form of this street. This is, this is not a through road, you know? This is not a straight road like Laurelwood or some of those that you can see where you're going. So, this, the entire setup of this is going to be right angles and quick turns, and the gate's not going to slow down the fire department as much as turning in all of these corners will. But I have a hard time believing, you know, the, the drivers that cruise through to use this as a shortcut are going to take the time to look around these corners as they go, and that's our concern. And I have four kids, and I worry about, you know, people using this as a shortcut and cutting off those corners, and that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Byrd, and I live at 678 South, 550 East. I just want to show you. I live in this home right here. It is now a dead-end street, and as has been mentioned, some of the treasures of our neighborhood are Jake and Sid and Kent. They have been there for years and years, and we consider them a great asset in our neighborhood. And I know all of us do everything we can to protect them. We don't want them to be closed in their homes. We want them to have the life that they have now. They are out and about, they are visiting each of us. Jake comes over to my house many times a week, and, and I treasure those times when he comes over. Same thing with Sid, we see her out. And same thing with Kent. He has been just a real asset in, in teaching our families and our children about what it means to serve other people. And, and we would really, really miss that if that was taken away from us. Not having a gate would, would really not allow for that type of interaction with, with these three people that we love, and we would just hate to see that come to an end. I hope you'll see that the gate is the best way to go. Thanks.
Lori, before you leave, could I ask you...
Yes.
...a couple of questions? First, are you the original owner of that home?
No.
When you moved in, what was expressed to you regarding the street? I've kind of heard whispers of...
We never knew that it would...
We told, we were told it was never going to be a through street or something. I'm just curious... I'm just curious if you-
I, I was never told that. I, I imagined, I assumed that someday the field would be developed, but I just assumed there would be access off of Main Street.
Okay.
I had no idea that it would be access through my street, which is just a little neighborhood road. And, and like Brian Wall said, that, that corner is treacherous. Coming east on that road, you cannot see what's ahead of you. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
If I could interrupt for just one minute, I could clarify that question a little bit. Originally, a long time ago before UDOT said we can only have access points every so often, there was a drawing way back when that subdivision was done. That horseshoed that and came back out and came right down the center of those two parcel lines. The worst case, that would have been at any time when any of these folks were buying their homes, would have been that they would have lived on a horseshoe. None of that development that's up through the other side was ever even a consideration. And really, nobody even thought that could ever connect up on top there the way that it has now. So that might help you a little bit in that.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jared Olson. I live on 499 East, 650 South. And I wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said. There's one person that we have felt to mention, that's my next door neighbor to the left, Rodney. He also uses a wheelchair occasionally to get around. As you've heard tonight, we bought our homes in this area because we have specific needs. We have specific needs and safety issues. And that's why we bought where we did. If you have listened tonight, we're not just neighbors, we're family. And if, if it was your family living in this situation and this was brought to your attention that this may happen, wouldn't you want the safety for your family? Wouldn't you consider all the options? I'm just thinking that if it was your family or if you lived in the subdivision, you may think about this a little bit stronger. You may be open to some of these options. I think this gate will help us. It'll help us maintain the quality of life that we have, maintain our family, our neighbors, and it will add to the community. If, if, you know, gated communities can add value, this street will help that with that gate. If there is an issue with an ordinance or a fire, let's get it dealt with. I mean, I'm sure there's a way to fulfill that ordinance that hasn't been stated. If we don't know what the ordinance is, how can you fulfill it? Do you see what I'm saying? But to maintain everybody's life in this neighborhood is what is best for Kaysville. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Funk. I don't live anywhere on that map, but I live about a block and a half east. And these are all my friends. And, and I've been looking for a place to move from my current home for 10 years. And now I own, I have a deposit on a lot in Whisper Creek because these are great people. And everybody down there and everybody up there is all in agreement and I'm in agreement too.
Thank you. I, if there's no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. No, open it up for discussion.
First, I'd just like to comment on and express appreciation for the comments that were expressed here this evening. And my count was right, 21 of them. Very civil, very, very well articulated. We appreciate that as a commission when, when things are put together like that. And then, and also Mr. Whitaker for what he's done. I, I do have to admit, I'm, I'm going to, anybody that drives down Main Street this time of the year, we're going to miss your Christmas lights. But I just, before we started, I just wanted to thank everybody for the comments and for the civility of it.
Nice point.
You know, I'll start us off just a little bit, a couple of questions. First, it was, well, it was right at the end. Jared made the comment questioning the, do we know the flexibility of that fire code? How rigid it is, whether it can be changed? That's, that's really my primary concern. As it says in there, "The fire department has indicated this proposal would not meet the minimum fire code requirements for the assisted living center." I.e., we can't build the assisted living center with this in place, according to code. Do we have any flexibility with the code or is this hard and fast and everything we've talked about is moot?
What is the minimum?
Fire code typically gives a lot of discretion to the local jurisdiction. I'm sure there's some available in this case. I'm merely reporting what was returned to me upon review of the development by the fire department.
We don't have anybody here tonight from the fire department, do we?
Not usually.
And we have a new fire chief to Kaysville.
Yes.
So they didn't say exactly-
So is it too narrow? Is there not a turnaround? Is there, and how does this differ from other, other gated communities? Because some of the, the other gated communities, they dead-end as well. I, I'm in agreement with, with Tom. We, you know, what is, what is that requirement right now that it's not being met? And what could they do? Could they widen the street?
As I understand it, the biggest concern is the fact that there's a assisted living center adjacent to this proposed road. If you have a fire in that facility and you have 75 people that need assistance getting out, they want to have clear access at all points of the building to manage that.
Do you have the assisted living plat? We could pull up, too. I was trying to remember, I, I know UDOT wasn't, previously, we couldn't put any through streets or any other access off Main, but wasn't there one coming off Main for the-
To the parking.
Yeah, for parking and to access the center? And then that, wasn't there another one coming in from the other side, too?
The way the, the facility is proposed, is the access to it will come in opposite of Burton Lane and come around this way. Parking lot in the middle and the building kind of U-shaped around it. So there was no-
Looks like we have an expert, Andy.
No immediate access off the proposed road.
Yeah, I thought, I thought they had one coming off of here, too.
But there did need to be fire access in the back.
Yeah. So I've met with, actually, I've met with the, the old chief and a new chief. And so, and both of them concur that we do need to have access off the back.
Okay.
As, as far as what Andy was describing, we have an access going into this facility directly across the street from Burton Lane. It, amongst other things, provides for a five-foot wide UDOT.
Oh, cool. You got to push it to use it?
Okay. So we'd have access off of right here and it, and then the parking lot would be in front. There is currently no actual deliveries or anything that would come off of this private street, as you may recall that conversation. However, they do need to access the back of that property. Local code says that we need to be 150 feet from any fire apparatus to the farthest point of the building. In meeting with the fire department as late as this morning, they really can't tell me why, other than, hey, it's a pain for us to have to deal with that fence, okay? So I offered to them that I could even move the fence or the gate to another location.
That was my next question.
So they could come up and all the way and have clear access to that. The chief was okay with that. However, one of his other constituents, which I will not name, was dug in on it, okay? And so he holds other authority as well and I don't want to get sideways with him. But I would be happy to put that gate there. I could put that gate where it's proposed. I could put that gate there, but I know that would be a problem. And I asked him why. The only conversation was that, well, if we needed to get to this fire hydrant, while I'm already putting in a new fire hydrant there, there's an existing fire hydrant there. There's also an existing fire, a new fire hydrant to go there and an existing one there. If we needed to get to this one, that gate, excuse me, that one, that gate would be in our way. The gate, we can make gates 100 different ways. They can be once, he says, what if it closes while we're, while we're trying to work? They can make gates that will open and stay open for 30 seconds. They make gates that can open and if they're open with the Yelp siren, it's called, will remain open for an indefinite period of time until it is manually set to close again. I think we could accommodate their concerns. However, I don't know that they're really excited about working with us on those things. And as far as I know, there's no ordinance or code that would really require or control however that works. And I'm sure that we could supersede whatever other things have been done in other gated communities like The Woods, it's over on the other side of town, and a few things like that that are behind two gates, so.
Is there a fail-safe on those gates? If, if something happens and that gate fails to open, what's, what's the backup? Is it an aux box with a key?
There's a keypad. And again, at that point, you have to get out and punch it in manually. There's also, I think that you can get a manual overlock that, override that has a little lock box. They have a key to that that works like an aux box. You hit that and it has a battery backup and then it opens. It would slow them down 30 seconds to bail out of a truck and actually get into that. That would only be in the case of total power failure, which we all experienced a few weeks ago. But it's not very common that that happens, so.
Right.
And I would be willing to do some investigation and find out if we can't even go as far as to have a full-blown battery backup system that works much the same as any other set of, say, emergency light you'd have inside of a building that remains charged and recharges during the course of normal time. And when it goes down, the power goes down, it maintains the charge for eight or 12 hours or something like that. I'm sure there's ways to work around that because we're not the only gated community in America. And so I'm sure we can figure it out.
Because I, it's interesting, both the fire department and all the residents have the same concern, just from different perspectives. There's a safety as well.
Sure.
Wanting to be able to respond and if, if somebody needs something, to be able to access them and get to them as quickly as possible. Whereas the residents, you know, they want a safe community, so.
One other point I might make is that unlike The Woods where there's a gate on both ends and there was absolutely no access to it, except for to get through one of those two gates, we do have access in two other. To get to every piece of property, you could come this way and get to those buildings coming up this direction. Or you could come all the way up and around in two different ways and service the, the, right now, temporary cul-de-sac or get to the homes that would be built there if the fence remains in that location. We're not shutting off anybody completely from any access at all, which is unlike several gated communities, including those that would be a gated cul-de-sac or a gated, a double gate like we have in other parts of town.
Right. I think the difference here is the assisted living center isn't in those other locations and that's their concern. If, if there was no assisted living center, I think this would be a slam dunk. They're concerned with 75 people that can't move and getting them out. If it was 75 homes, everyone here is, for the most part, capable of moving themselves or their children or their families and getting them out. Assisted living centers, they're trapped. So clearly, there, there's concern there from a safety standpoint.
That's why I think, this isn't batteries on this, that's why if the, if the gate were to be moved down, I mean, because they didn't tell you exactly what the minimum requirement was. It wasn't meeting, right? They just, they just didn't like it. They, they wanted to-
Yeah. And like I say, if it's moved that-
I mean, if it's, if it's not wide enough, you can always widen the road if, if they need the access. I, I like the idea of moving the gate somewhere down here so they can still come in and access in here. And they got access down here. Then, like you said, they can come up and around if they had to. So they got different points.
I, I kind of like the gate located over there.
Yeah. You put it over here.
My thoughts on having the gate there is that if they came this way, even if the gate wasn't operable, there's no fence or anything along this back property line. There's a playground, there's a basketball court, and I, a little pickleball court or something, I don't recall the third thing, along the back of that property right there. There is no fence there. They could come this way and never even need to open the gate, still connect to that fire hydrant and still take care of that wing. Or if they came up and around, or say a fruit heights it someday, fired and then came down this road and came in, they still can access that building. That's the reason for the gate where it's at.
Right there.
And there is no fence. We could, there, there's so many ways that they could access the back of that property, even with that gate in.
So if, if, if you did a gate there, though, and you're saying they could come in from here or from here, that means there'd have to be a drive on both sides of the gate. Then would you, would they have to gate that off to keep cars from going around it?
Actually, if you wanted to have a Jeep, you could get around that gate any day of the week. All that is, is to control the people that don't want to, you know, rough up the bottom of the road.
I like the idea of down here, but-
For instance, this sidewalk, there's no fence there. This sidewalk will go up and any walking traffic can walk from this neighborhood to that neighborhood. On the west side, again, there's no fence. Walking traffic can wander along this side and get to either neighborhood that they want. All that gate is, is right across the road and it's just to, just to stop the car traffic.
Are there going to be sidewalks on both sides of that road?
There's a sidewalk on the east side, just curb and gutter on the west side. Sidewalk on the east side right now, as proposed, is to be a drivable walkway and it's part of the 35-foot wide width of the road.
Thank you.
One other question that maybe you can answer. Who maintains the road and the gate? It's a private road, it's not us.
Absolutely. It's currently proposed to be an HOA. That means that the people living there will have to drag their garbage cans to there or there. And that means that they'll have to find out, find their own way to, to plow their snow.
And then maintain it? The HOA maintains it all the time?
HOA maintains the road, just like any other HOA in the city.
So the HOA will consist of those seven units? Will it also include the assisted living center?
That's in, in negotiations right now, but the owner says, yeah, we'll participate in our part of it. We want to help keep that road open.
Okay.
So what, Andy, what's the signage requirement? If, if that's a, well, one private road and then it's also gated or closed, do they have to do signage down here and then up here somewhere to? Because, I mean, last thing you want is people coming down and all of a sudden hitting here and seeing it's closed and doing U-turns and flipping around and going back.
Or going over the curb.
Yeah, or going over the curb.
You'd likely put a, a no outlet sign at the appropriate-
At the beginning.
So people knew that it didn't go through.
No throughs road or something like that? I guess I, I'm not understanding why it's an issue from a fire and life safety standpoint.
Yeah, I'm not either. Dr. Pepper's for everybody.
I, I do, I do think that there's a one-win situation that we can do. That's, it'd be nice to have the new fire chief maybe get involved or talk with it. But you, you've already talked with them, but it'd be, yeah. I just, I don't, I don't, as long as they've got that access, you know, the gate, I could see if they've, if they've got to go through a gate, they could argue that it's going to take extra time and, and they may not have 30 seconds or a minute if a life's depending on that. So I can see them not wanting to have to stop to go through a gate. Yeah, I mean, if, if it opens, it's activated, it still takes time for it to open. If it fails, they've got to go open it. So there is lost time and, and when life matters, it's a matter of seconds. That's why I think if the gate were, you know, most, most of them are going to come, probably coming in off here, you know, the fire department down here.
So close, yeah.
They're going to be coming in this way. Very seldom are they going to be coming all the way around. That's why I think, you know, a south end gate gives the most access to it, accessibility to it if there's, then they don't have to wait for any gate to get in, but then it also stops through traffic from either side.
And private, because it needs to be private to accommodate a gate, right?
Right. Needs to be a private, a private road to afford the gate is my understanding. And so that's the reason why we propose to be a, a RUD.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm not concerned about the private drive because it becomes a residence that live in there, their, their issue. If they come back to the city, well, you guys, you knew it was private, you chose to live there, it's your, your issue. So if the road needs to be repaved or resold or they have issues or something like that, it's, it's theirs.
Sure. And that's how many other HOAs have been set up in the city, just that same way. Back on the, on the, talking about signs, we are proposing a sign at the start of each one of those roads and actually have a drawing that shows what those signs look like right now. So one would go at the start of that, one would go at the start of that. If a person misses those signs, we have those two turnarounds that were, that, one on each other, each side of that, of that gate. If I may, I'll bring some drawings to you of that.
And it helps to also have a sign at the very beginning of the road.
You could have a no outlet sign on Main Street.
No outlet, yeah. It helps to have a sign at the very beginning.
We could, we could put a sign at the front of the road that would say-
No outlet.
No, no, no through access, something like that.
Yeah.
These, we're trying to make these- These, we're trying to make these kind of, for lack of better terms, and just call it out to be a private community.
Seems like they've really tried.
Again, if we could get that gate approved, I would work with the fire department, I'd put it anywhere. But to me, it makes absolutely the most sense to put it where it's at now because any fire agency coming from either direction has access to that. And if they wanted, I mean, I actually have strategically located a fire hydrant on the south side of that gate, so they can pull right up to the gate, even if it didn't open, connect right to that point. I can also put one on the north side, even though there is one currently right there. And I could put one on the north side to afford that. Again, we're already planning one there, and there already exists one there. I think we'd have them more than serviced for any hydrants that they would need to get to.
From a water pressure standpoint, this is back to you, Andy, Lyle, is, do they have to have so much pressure per hydrant? I'm sure they do, but if, then that would probably limit the number of hydrants they can have, or does that matter? They can have as many hydrants as long as they're not tapping into too many of them?
Typically, we're not arguing over somebody over having too many fire hydrants.
Right.
The line can still be looped all the way through. It won't be impeded by the gate, so the water pressure isn't a concern to us.
Okay.
I actually visited one about the water model with the fire department. Their last flow tests show that there's forty-six hundred pounds at the, at that hydrant right there. That's substantially more than what's required. The requirement is two thousand for a building like this that's already sprinkled.
That's gallons a minute, not per psi.
Excuse me, I said pounds, gallons per minute, yeah. Or over twice what's required, so.
Let me ask you something. You talked about a basketball court. That's for the assisted living, is that correct, when you're talking that they could go down into that area?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Okay, when you said that they could miss the gate and go down into, and you pointed out that there was a basketball court, and is that from the assisted living?
That would be on the assisted living's property. You'd have to skip, you'd have to jump the curb and go down a couple of feet of an incline to get there. But, you know, I mean, you're not, your car's not going to survive the trip. But what I'm saying is if you pulled in there with a fire engine, you can certainly get to anything along the back of that, even if that gate's closed.
Well, what my thought was, and my question maybe, have we had a final plat on that? Maybe the assisted living could work a little bit with what that area looks like back there.
We have a final site plan submitted on that. Andy, you want to take that?
Development agreement approved. It was subject to meeting the fire code requirements, so there's a little bit of room for final adjustments.
Okay, that was one thought.
So, we could still work with them for location of that. If they had looked at something that we haven't looked at and they have another location that would work better for that gate, I'd be happy to work with them on it. But I would be after you guys would approve it, I would assume, so.
And again, ours is a recommendation of approval or deny. And even if we were to approve, the city council approved, does the fire department still have final say? They don't, do they?
If the city council tells them to make it work, they will figure out what's needed to make it work.
The other item of, besides the fire access, fire code requirements are the distribution of traffic. There's more ways to get out if it is public. So, I'm just bringing that up because not everyone thinks about that when you're looking at more than just the streets right next to it. There's flows, you know, flows, and a lot of times, people don't want all the flows that could come. So, that's, that's a big part of it. But the connectivity. So, it wouldn't, with the gate, there would not be connectivity.
Well, I'm assuming most of the residents, parking in the front on the west, most of the residents or visitors are going to come in off Main Street. Then ambulatory services, they've, you've probably got an area where they could pull in if they needed to come in, is that on the front of the building or is it on the side? I'm guessing it's probably not on the back.
So, if I understand the question correctly...
If an ambulance has to come to pick somebody up or to respond, where would they go?
So, most of the time, if it was, say, it's an ambulance or something like that, they're going to come in right here and go in the front door.
Yep.
And that's going to be ninety-eight percent of, maybe ninety-nine percent of the time. Now, yeah, they're going to have, you know, a lot of, a lot of that sort of thing with elderly people living there. The only time that you would ever have anybody, an emergency vehicle ever come up here would be in the case of fire. And so, and they still are going to respond here. The fire riser room is there, the fire panel is there, excuse me, the fire riser room is there, the fire panel is there, and all of the water entry points are on the front of the building. And that might have changed, Andy, from the drawing I gave you, by the way, talking to those guys, talking to Josh down there. So, but the, so anytime they're going to service anything there, all of their deliveries are scheduled to come in. This actually isn't the most current one, but it's close to it. All the deliveries come in a side door right here. There's nothing that ever happens along the back, except for today, we actually took this little parking lot out, but today, the fire marshal, fire chief wants us to have some sort of a little drive that goes back down to that corner. I've got to pave a little piece right there, and we'll work through that with them as to what their requirement is. So, I think if your question is, what's going to be happening back here or back and forth on this street, absolutely nothing unless there's a fire.
Yeah. Yeah, that answered it, thanks.
Okay.
Dave, if there was a toxic spill or a earthquake or something, if that gate be opened and people wanted to come out in that direction, and could you get out?
Sure. Yeah, every one of those gates do actually have a breakaway mechanism on them. So, you can hit it hard if you need to, it's going to damage your vehicle, but you're going to get out there. You can't push it manually and open them, but they all have a breakaway mechanism on them.
And a fire truck won't have any problem going through that if they had to.
No. No, they're not going to ruin that truck, it's going to burn first.
Which resident wants to get their car?
Okay.
Any more questions?
I'm, I'm good.
I mean, if we made a recommendation to approve, the city council then could require the fire department be there to answer their questions.
Yeah, they can accept or reject our recommendation either way and other stipulations on it.
You know, before we make a recommendation one way or the other, do you want to address something that, a question or a problem that this brings up? And it was something that I brought up earlier with Lori, and it's these stub roads. We have a misconception that a stub road is a cul-de-sac, and it's not. It's intended that at a future point, there will be a road. If you look at that, where Lori's house is right on the corner, that house would not exist without a stub road. We would have required it to be a cul-de-sac, it would have cut that short, and you'd have one house there instead of one on each side. So, I think in general, as a populace, we're naive when it comes to these stub roads, thinking, well, why would you put a through road there? I've lived here for years, I bought my house expecting it's going to be like that forever. And this goes to beyond this populace, to the whole city and us as a group. We're in a lot of sticky situations with stub roads and people's expectations. It's not a cul-de-sac. I think we're very fortunate that we have someone who's willing to put a private road through there. Developer could just come through and say, we're putting a road, and all of your concerns and all of the danger and safety would be irrelevant. It really wouldn't matter. So, I think you're very fortunate, we're very fortunate, that you have someone willing to do this and put a private road in. But I think there's, I just wanted to say, I think there's some danger in assuming those stub roads are okay.
And if it would have been a residential development, for sure, it would have been a public road. So, they considered that this was the least impact, impact to the area to offer this facility, which they said originally.
We've got several areas with stub roads, you know, for future planning. It's just part of the planning process of it, but that's a great point.
But on that note, I'll make a recommendation that we, that we recommend approval of the Whisper Creek PUD subdivision, preliminary and final plat approval for Davis Whitaker, six eighty-nine south, five fifty east, with a recommendation that they be flexible to move the gate contingent upon recommendation from the fire department.
And maintaining a private drive?
Maintaining a private drive.
And whatever else meets the fire code.
Agreed. Whatever else requirements are needed to meet the fire code.
I'll second it.
Aye.
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 Thank you for all of your comments and taking the time.
I'm sorry, number seven.
Well... As a courtesy, could all of you take your comments out in the hall? I do have my gavel.
Don't make us gavel now. Actually, just for the...
That would be amazing.
I think Matt's the only one that's ever used that to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. We will move right along to the final plat approval.
Probably recall that several months ago, we reviewed this property up the top of one hundred North Street. Came in for preliminary plat approval in about June and July timeframe. Subdivision, it's recommended for preliminary plat approval, subject to several conditions listed in the minutes by the planning commission. This was essentially the preliminary plat layout, showed a private street extension of the dead-end road, five lots configured around the perimeter of it. There was concern that there was a right-of-way that ran through the property here and accessed some property to the east of this. So, there was a strip of land left available that would meet the requirements of a flag lot. They've now completed their assignment, done all the engineering that they've asked for. They've proposed a final plat. They did move the access from the very north edge of the property between these two lots to help give better access to the properties here and also to accommodate utilities a little bit better.
Could you say that again, Andy? I just need to catch that a little better. Sorry. They moved something between...
The preliminary plat, the access strip was along the very north edge.
Uh-huh.
They've now placed a lot on the north edge and moved the access strip one lot south. What that does is it accesses the center of this property up here and it also accommodates some of the utilities a little bit better.
Uh-huh.
Other than that, the plat's essentially as it was presented in the preliminary thing. If you'd like, if you like, I can address how they've dealt with the issues, the... Got to find the list real here quick. Your conditions, one condition, the first condition was, we discussed, what they're showing on this plat, it's a thirty-six inch, or thirty-six foot strip of property that they're willing to deed to these property owners or reserve for them in some fashion, which would allow for a double flag lot to give them up to two lots on that property, which is about how much space they have. So, there hasn't been complete agreement between the developer and the property owners on that, but there's been some attempts to do that. That's, they've addressed the first one. There was a lot of concern about stormwater issues. I'll go back to the preliminary plat, it shows the photo a little better. There is a narration, not narration, a storm rain facility that runs down the north edge of the property. This is kind of a low area in here. This has been open ditch over the years. Occasionally, when it goes from the open ditch into the, into the storm drain, the branches and limbs off the trees in the area plug up the outlet grate, and then the water backs up. So, the city's kind of made a little berm to contain that water, so they'd have time to go clean the grate and allow it to pass on through. What the developer was asked to do and has done is they've sized detention basin, they've sized it to accommodate all the water that they would generate, all the water that would come off the future development of the empty properties to the east, and also replace the amount of volume that was already in the basin that the city had put in for maintenance purposes. They also have a, the mainstream that would bypass and be piped all the way through, the ability of the, that pipe, if it were plugged at the grate, to spill into the detention basin and then be carried out in a second storm rain facility. So, that's how they've addressed the storm rain things. They did do a geotech report on the, on the ground, particularly in this area, to make sure where it's been expressed that that's been a bog forever. Wanted to make sure the soils were adequate to support construction on it. They showed about a foot and a half of top soil and then typical Kaseville clay beyond that. So, there wouldn't be a need for significant mitigation of the soils in that area due to saturation. Third item that you listed as a condition was to address privacy along the property, particularly this home. Been several things proposed. First of all, our ordinance says that the minimum setback to a private lane is twenty feet. So, they've set the road back twenty feet from the property, or twenty feet from the home. Home has an eight-foot side yard, they've set the road back twelve feet, so it meets the minimum standard of the ordinance. They've also proposed that they're willing to construct a retaining wall, which there's some elevation difference, and place a vinyl fence across the top of that wall or inside the wall to help protect the privacy of this home. So, that's how they've addressed that one. They're open to suggestions on look of the wall and the fence if that becomes an issue. Fourth was a geotechnical report, as I mentioned, things that we were concerned with were addressed in that report. And then the last one was that the lot over here that was originally part, not be included in the PRUD. So, I've looked at those things from a technical basis. I believe they've been properly addressed. A couple of those are beyond strictly technical, the privacy and the, and the access to the adjacent property. So, I think there's still some discretion on your hands to look at those and express, well, you can determine if you believe those have been adequately addressed at this point or if there needs to be further, further discussion on those types of issues.
Could you show us where Briggs live?
Mr. Briggs and his wife own the property to the east, comes to about here. They own that property there, their homes here, and they acquired some property behind it.
Okay. Are they satisfied with their access?
I'm satisfied. It's not my property, but I'm, it seems like a reasonable approach. It allows them to develop up to two lots on that property, which is probably more than they have ability to do under current conditions.
I guess my question, have you heard from them that they...
Yes, we've met several times.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, is that a private lane?
This is proposed as a private lane from the end of this temporary turnaround down through here. The proposal is, if I go back to the actual plat, they would give the Briggs access to this property and an easement over the small portion of the private lane back to the public street. So, they would have a clear right to use that for access to their property. So they would have a clear right to use that for access to their property.
And what's the reason for a private lane instead of that just being a normal public street?
Generically, it takes up less area.
Oh, they can make it more narrow?
Yes.
Okay.
But they do understand though, they're gonna have to maintain the roads and then that section of grass, it's...
Yes.
To get that setback requirement, there's somebody's gonna have to maintain that.
The Briggs have expressed concern over owning this property before they're ready to develop. Mr. Prince has suggested that he platted as the parcel, have the homeowners association own it and maintain it until such time as the Briggs are ready to develop it, either the homeowners association or the adjacent properties.
And in one of the meetings, there was talk of a gravel and asphalt, but that would be up to the Briggs then when they were ready to do it?
That's the proposal at this point, yes.
Because it would be more like a flag driveway?
Be a flag driveway, yes.
And lot number six is being taken out of the PUD?
No, there's no need for that to be in the PRUD overlay zone.
Okay.
I'll just mention that there is not a public hearing required. There are Mr. Briggs and Ms. Taylor who are adjacent property owners and possibly others that are interested in this item that are here, but it is not a required public hearing. Obviously, Mr. Prince is here as well as the applicant.
Do you have anything that you would like to say, or do we have any questions for them?
I'm curious, after having the chance to hear how the concerns were addressed, if the neighbors would like to say if there's anything else that they feel like has not yet been addressed.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Good evening. My name is Doug Farr. I've been retained by the Taylors and the Tices, who are the adjacent landowners to the west of this proposed PRUD. I want to make clear just at the beginning of the outset here, I have not been before the commission on this matter previous. I know the Taylors and Tices have been to these meetings and the preliminary plat approval. But I want to make clear that my clients do not oppose development. They're not asking for open space, they're not asking for a park, they're not asking for it to be undeveloped. They actually are in agreement that it should be developed and they want it to be developed, but they just want to make sure that it's developed properly and it doesn't impact, materially impact or damage their property. And they are not satisfied that the conditions have been met or satisfied. And there are specific issues and concerns they do have. Specifically, the city has not followed proper procedures, which I think was addressed at the last meeting and will be addressed in future meetings if it continues and final plat approval is given by the city council. But the biggest issue for my clients is the city hasn't been transparent and hasn't been cooperative with my clients, and that's why I'm here, because the city, my clients felt like they needed to do something to be able to get access to documents and information. For example, the city has not provided us with copies of the engineering plans that the city engineers relying on to state that the planning commission's conditions have been satisfied. We met with, once we heard about the planning commission meeting today, we met with the city engineer yesterday, or no, two days ago, excuse me, on Monday, or was it Tuesday?
It's this week.
Yeah, it was this week. We made a request for the engineering plans, we made a request for the geotechnical report, and the city engineer said he would need to talk to city's council the next day, yesterday morning. The city engineer got back to me and informed me that the city would not be producing those documents, and we think that's a violation of the law. You know, under a public record, they said these aren't public records, but under Utah Code sixty-three G dash two dash one oh three, a public record includes any document that is prepared, owned, received, or retained by a governmental entity. And these documents were received from the developer and they refused to provide them to us. So at a minimum, we think that this...
Did you make a grammar request for those records?
We did not make a grammar request. We got that yesterday, late morning.
Time-wise?
Time-wise, and you know, we had just rushed to get in the meeting with them and we're preparing to come here today, but we are prepared to do a grammar request and we'll do that, but even if we issued it yesterday, they could've come back and said, we have ten days, you're not gonna get it before the meeting. So we felt like, even if we rushed and expended the time and resources to do the grammar question on expedited basis, we wouldn't have gotten the results before this hearing today, based on their prior actions. So at a minimum, we think that this, the recommendation that this commission makes needs to be continued until at least the time that my clients have to be able to review these plans and make sure that the drainage, the engineering for the drainage, the engineering for the road, the private lane, actually satisfies the requirements that the city engineer says it does. We would like our own engineer to look at that and confirm, because as has been made abundantly clear in prior meetings, there are serious water issues here, and I have pictures from as early, from as late as November seventeenth of standing water on both sides of the berm. The city engineer explains that there's only water issue on one side where there's clogging. There's issues on the other side of the berm as well with standing water that we think are serious issues. I think at a minimum, it's important that we align ourselves with the purpose of the PRUD, to preserve meaningful open space, such as wetlands, which we have some concerns whether there's open waters here, and to preserve character and ensure greater compatibility of new construction with the existing neighborhood. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that this development is compatible with the existing neighborhood. The city code says in considering the application for a PRUD overlay zone, the following shall be evaluated. A, a comprehensive and harmonious arrangement of buildings, circulation ways, parking, and development amenities. B, avoidance of any disrupting element in the neighborhood. C, housing types, which we don't have an issue with at this point. D, impacts of the roads, lanes, or driveways on adjacent properties. And E, impacts on the privacy of adjacent properties. And these may be mitigated by imposing conditions such as building placement, height and mass, reduction in density, as well as some others that I'm sure the commission is familiar with. But one of the most important issues is that this PRUD and this plan is proposing to vacate a city right of way, a city street, and put in a private lane. And put in the private lane directly adjacent to my client's property. There's a couple of concerns with that. One, we don't think the code has been satisfied, not here today, tonight, from what I've heard or at previous meetings. Under Utah law ten, Utah Code annotated ten dash nine A dash six oh nine point five, which is vacating a street right of way or easement, it does say that the legislative body may adopt an ordinance granting a petition to vacate some or all of a public street, right of way, or easement, if the legislative body finds that, one, good cause exists for the vacation, and two, neither the public interest nor any person will be materially injured by the vacation. That's what we're here today. We're here to find out what the good cause is.
Sorry to interrupt you for a minute. You realize the planning commission's not the legislative body?
Right, but you're gonna make a recommendation to the legislative body, and that's why we're here today, is to make sure that the commission has put on conditions, and we want to make sure those conditions are satisfied. And we want to make sure that the recommendation that this commission makes to the city council is with full knowledge of what is required. And so we think that the commission should consider these aspects as well in making its recommendations to the city council. And I haven't heard any basis for the good cause for vacating this right of way and making a private lane right next to my client's property.
Is it just because that right of way was to connect to Fruit Heights, but since that's just never going to happen, that's why it just sits there, not, right?
The right of way was plotted essentially with the original town site survey of Caseville. That plating ended at what became the Caseville-Fruit Heights border. Fruit Heights developed property without considering access to that, excuse me, to that platted right of way. And then this property developed from there down. They developed in methods that did not require that right of way, replaced it with other rights of ways to access the property. So it's been vacated from the east downward.
Yeah, so it can never connect anything?
It would not, no.
Yeah.
In fact, currently it ends at the Briggs's property between their home and the property that they've acquired. So that right of way goes from here to there as undeveloped right of way.
So that's the reason, right? Because it just can't be used for anything?
But it can be used for something. I'll let the Briggs speak to that, because I'm not, I don't represent the Briggs, but the Briggs would have access to their property if that right of way was maintained by the street, and that burden wouldn't be shifted to them to improve that right of way, that private right of way, and to maintain it. The city would have to do that, I mean, you know, would require a developer to put in that road. So I do think that there is a vacation of a definite benefit there, and then the change to a private lane does materially impact my client's property, because it is, if we go to the other slide.
Can I grab the...
Right, just right here where the private lane goes, there's actually a goalie right here, and the proposed road is to be elevated up to eight feet from the ground level. My client's property here is actually built in the ravine, you know, part of the basement is exposed and the foundation, and it was constructed in that ravine. And so this road will be elevated, which would cause concerns for privacy. Today is the first time, even after meeting with the city engineer, that we've heard about a fence. We've never heard that before. All we heard was there'd be an eight-foot retaining wall, which would not help with privacy with parking there in the cul-de-sac and with turnaround with lights, which would be going into, you know, the second floor of this house, as well as looking down into the basement windows as well. So to kind of move on and to reconsider your time...
Before we move on, just one second, real quick, Andy, the, Lyle, whoever, this is the right of way we're vacating, isn't it? The right of way that the city's vacating is not adjacent to their property at all?
No, that's correct. The right of way that's proposed to be vacated sits in this area over here.
Where the basin kind of is, it's kind of low right there, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So whether the city vacates that land or not is irrelevant to this private lane being built?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
And that right of way, it goes in generally the same area as the easement that's being proposed to the, or the right of way to the Briggs property.
Yeah.
So the specific conditions that are at issue for my clients are the stormwater problems being addressed, the privacy concerns being addressed along the western property line, and this work with staff to determine if a geotechnical report is needed. We found out that a geotechnical report was generated, but we have not been given a copy.
And I think it's, you'd mentioned before that they said no to you, and I think that that's probably standard procedure with most cities, that it would have to probably go through the grammar request is probably what I'm guessing. So you can still obtain all that stuff through that.
Sure.
So you'll still be able to gain access to it to take a look at. Your concern is, you don't want us to take action tonight until your clients and you've had an opportunity to really look at that stuff.
My concern is twofold. One, that's not my experience, I do a lot of work with municipalities and generally have a really pretty collaborative working relationship when it comes to an issue like this, when they know there's due process considerations, which is my second concern, due process considerations. We're finding out about this on the Monday before, or Tuesday before a planning commission meeting, that, you know, engineering plans have been submitted and geotechnical reports have been submitted that are allegedly resolve or satisfy these conditions, but we're given no access to have them and have our own engineer look at them. And but for our proactiveness in getting in a meeting with, reaching out to the city attorney, getting a meeting with the city engineer, we would have no information prior to this meeting, because it wasn't included in the staff report. And so we do have some legitimate concerns there. For the stormwater, I don't think there's any question that there's been flooding concerns. The developer said, quote, "There's no question that there are water issues on this property." Craig Larson at the last meeting in front of this commission said, quote, "There's no question that there is a water problem here." And the water problem isn't limited to where the creek is that goes into the storm drain system. There is water problem, and my client has experienced severe flooding in, at their property here, in the basement and through the garage. The city had to spend thirty thousand dollars in building that berm and making improvements to the curb and gutters there, because at the time of this development, the city engineer had said, yeah, all water problems and extra piping's there, it's fixed. Well, that wasn't the case then, and we are not convinced that that's not the case now, based on the nature of this property and the significant water problems. And I think the elevated road makes it even more likely that water will flow to the Taylor's property. We have some serious concerns about how snow, the snow plow will plow snow. It goes downhill. You know, there's no way to put it, one thing the city engineer said, well, they'll just get the snow plow and just push it all that way towards houses, which is not gonna happen and no, you're not gonna find any snow plower that's just gonna keep making those short plows. We think this will be a continual problem, which could constitute in the future a snowshed trespass, which ironically is a thing, and I've dealt with it in Park City on many occasions, and which could cause future damage or materially injure our property by vacating this other city street and allowing this private lane. And regardless of what the snow is, it's gonna melt and it's gonna go downhill, which is right towards our client's property. The privacy concerns, you know, it's Caseville Code nineteen dash five dash one says, "The street arrangement shall not cause unnecessary hardship to owners of adjoining property when they plot their own land and seek to provide for convenient access to it." And we do think that this provides an unnecessary hardship to the existing home and our clients. And bringing an elevated private lane against the Taylor's property presents, excuse me, a significant privacy concern that we don't think an eight-foot retaining wall will resolve. Yeah, and I think the same privacy and nuisance concerns exist on the second story of the house, based on this elevated road.
Learning about the fence on top of the retaining wall, does that more adequately mitigate?
It could, but we're still some really serious questions about this retaining wall and how it's gonna be built, and, I mean, you can't just build an eight-foot retaining wall right next to the road. There's gonna be levels and how close that gets to the property and what impact that's gonna have for drainage right there in the basin, which all that water would go directly to our client's property. But then again, we haven't seen the engineering for the storm drain plan.
Yeah.
But again, our aim is not to be difficult or unreasonable. We're not trying to stop any development. We want this developer to develop the property and we want the developer to realize a profit. We have alternative plans that use the city's right of way and still provide for five lots and access to all the properties. We presented those to the city engineer, and he seems to think they're feasible, but he, you know, the city engineer's position is, we can't tell a developer how to develop. But a city can, you know, keep its right of way.
Have you shared that with the developer?
Yes, those have been shared with the developer.
Could I interrupt this? We have a councilman that needs to, commissioner that needs, has a family matter that he needs to leave, so we would like to maybe make some kind of a motion and see if we can do it. Otherwise, we're not gonna have a quorum and we'd have to table it anyway.
Well, I could. I think there's enough concerns that, I think there's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of things that have happened to try to make this work, and I think if we're gonna do it, I'd like, me personally, I'd feel comfortable in knowing that we've put all the pieces together on this. And me personally, I would, I'd say, you know, let's table it until we, you know, they get a chance to look at it.
They have time to do the grammar request.
Yeah, then bring it back and take a look at it.
Yeah, I can, I mean, with the emergency, I'll turn over the time.
Thank you.
I apologize, I need to leave. I can give you one minute of my time and then it's a moot point, because we won't have a quorum, we won't have a vote.
I wish I had more time. This has been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
Planning commission met on May twenty-fifth. The fence has been there for months and months in the record stand.
I saw it in the minutes.
Right, it's been there for a long, long time. Per the engineers, and we've had three different sets of engineers, this mitigates the water better than anything else. The water problem was coming from the creek. We have mitigated that, not only with water detention, but a backup system. This home, her home, will not have any water problems.
Have you shared that with them? Are you willing to let them look at your reports and engineering studies?
Absolutely, if the intent is to, is not to try to find a way to stop us, because I've gone back and forth, and every time I've met with them, in the end, it's not been trying to get it done. So, for example, Mrs. Taylor, the last time I talked to her on the property, she asked me questions. I said, well, every time I talk to you, you end up coming around and using it against me, and you're trying to stop the development altogether. We don't wanna stop it, dah 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 dah. In the end, the last thing she said to me is, "We will stop you." So, the engineering has been done. We did... We did a geotechnical study. We did a, um, a hydrology study. But, uh, we used a geologist. We've used an engineer that was specific for the hydrology.
I appreciate your comments, but I apologize. I have to leave.
I have to thank him for coming. His father passed away an hour before we started, so I was really happy- That he was, made a quorum for us to this point.
But we can still listen, right?
Right.
You keep going.
Because me, I, I can, I can tell you right now, I, uh, if, if everything's in order and, and if, if, that's why I'm recommending, at least my, my thought is, table it, let them take a look at it. They can't stop it, um, if everything's in order. I mean, if, if it comes back and it satisfies the city engineering, it satisfies planning commission, it satisfies the council. I mean, if you've proven that it works and then if, and if their intent is to just block this just because they don't want it, uh, my, my inclination would be, I, i- if I'm satisfied, I'll vote in favor of it.
We have satisfied, we have satisfied the city, the city engineer. Um, what you're asking is that we submit, um, engineering-
Give them a chance to look at the engineering and, 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 uh, you know, if their attorney is, is true to his word and says what he says, uh, said here, um, you know, then I guess we'll find out if, if, if that's correct or not. Um, if it's satisfied and, and you've had three engineers look at it and, and, uh, it's, it's good and they come back and if they've got some other reason or some other diversion to it, you know, it'll become transparent. Um, at least I, I think it will.
Part of the delay, um, has been these types of situations. They have known, we received preliminary platting approval from this, uh, the city council and from the planning commission. That was, city council was back on June fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, immediately, and known to all, we immediately were doing all of the studies. The people were out in the fields. They saw them, that they were there. Um, we continued to work on it. We met with Mr. Briggs' attorney and Mr. Briggs four different times with Andy, or excuse me, with Mr. Thompson. Um, four different times, and in the end, they chose not to keep the fifth appointment with us. The Taylors could have hired someone, could have treated this long, long ago. But if they wait until the time when we're supposed to get approval, then of course, there's always going to be a delay. So how, how do you treat that? Because this is, this has been going on for months. And they've known that we did, did the things. Anytime you submit engineering, it's not submitted to the neighborhood to see if they approve of engineering. That's the city's job. That's Mr. Thompson's job. That's our engineer's job. Um, we, we utilized a very reputable firm for the engineering project. We utilized a reputable firm for the geotechnical and, and the hydro, hydrology. Um, and all of it has come back, uh, very well. And, and there will be no problems on that. It's not true that we haven't talked about the fence. Um, water cannot go on that property. The wa, the slope of the land is actually to, toward the east. And we've engineered a waterway to take the water away. So I'm, I, I'm not sure how to, how to treat this. And it sounds like if the quorum's gone, that I, I don't know what to do. I didn't get a chance to respond.
I guess from engineer, you've, I mean, you have looked at it and from your perspective, it's satisfied, at least on your side, correct?
Yes, I've looked at the, the information, the data, the, the technical things. They all seem to comply.
And so I have a little bit of question-
Sure.
About, um, about the stormwater. So I know the city has some things in place now. But based on what will need to happen in the construction, um, I mean, right now, there's a basin and then it goes up, so this development has different elevations, pretty, you know, interesting. And so my, one of my questions is, what can you describe the engineering of the, of the stormwater? Is there an actual, um, tank that will be able to be inspected and maintained into the future? That's going to be underneath as a, a holding for the water? Or what is it that, that has been proposed to mitigate the water issues?
There's a number of things that have been done. Um, currently, the slope of the land is right here through her home.
Yeah.
So, and then by, from what the attorney has just said, um, there has been water on both, standing water on both sides of that, um, uh, dike that comes across here.
Mm-hmm.
So that hasn't evidently, according to them, has not stopped sufficiently.
Right.
Um, we have engineered a waterway here that-
Under the road?
No, in, in the gutters here.
Okay.
This is, this is, that's a, um, a storm grate, a storm grate.
Mm-hmm.
This takes it up to the detention pond, which the city requires a ten-year, um, detention. And we have supplied a fifty-year storm, uh, detention, meaning a fifty-year, uh, event.
Event.
Um, the, the, uh, waterway here can handle a hundred-year very easily. We did a, if you'll see this, this is another, um, storm grate right there. And if this were to fill up, if that were to, to, uh, become clogged and this were to fill up, it would then bypass that and go back into the storm drain. Currently, there's a storm drain here that takes the water right through her property. That will no longer be there. We have directed all of the water on the road and through here. Um, and then as far as, do you have any other questions concerning-
Where does it go then after? Is it, does it, is it designed to just filter down through materials down into the earth? Or does it actually collecting?
What the, what the detention does is it detains the initial, um, onslaught, if you were, if you would, and then, uh, allows it to go back into the system slowly.
With the storm, okay.
Correct.
So there's not a tank that has-
Well, it's a detention pond here.
But it's a, that's above ground.
That's above ground. That's correct. Um, so, you know, I, there's, there's, uh, the in, the engineers that, that worked on the project, that did the engineering for, uh, the subdivision. There's the engineers that did the hydrology study.
Uh-huh.
Um, there's another engineer, a separate one, that we passed it by, and then there's Mr. Thompson that has reviewed it. So all of these things have been reviewed. Um, I would have met with them anytime had they wanted to meet, you know, with, with us and go over things. We met with Mr. Briggs and these folks are very close. We met with Mr. Briggs four times. Um, the initial meeting with Mr. Briggs, um, was back in, uh, October. And then we met every week for four weeks in a row, um, with their attorney. And then at the, the last week, then the Taylors decide to hire an attorney and say, "We don't know anything." You know, I, I, I don't know what to do in that regard.
So that's, that's just been in this last week then?
Correct. So, yeah. So the, as far as meeting the requirements that were given by you and by the city council, we have met those requirements. And, um, I can answer any other questions that you have.
So the slope of the land actually goes toward that, that new retention that you're-
Correct.
Okay, that's interesting. So-
Well, they might feel comfortable once they understand that. I think that's been the problem. I can see where they may want to know what's happening and just feel comfortable with it.
So, um, so maintaining the hydrology of the area, sounds like that's all looking good.
It is. We did, um, the study was actually done, I think it was twenty-two acres. The entire watershed for this area, uh, was taken into account.
Twenty-two acres?
Correct.
Oh, wow.
And, um, it was studied on ten-year, fifty-year, hundred-year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we were able to meet everything that needed to be meet, met. We met all the requirements of the city on it, um, and took care of that.
It sounds, it sounds like you've done everything that, that we've asked and required as well.
Correct. As far as the privacy is concerned, that was the, when I spoke with Mrs. Taylor initially, she said that was the A number one concern, was privacy. They have all said that the water is a, is an issue. Those were two of the issues that were taken care of. Um, as far as the privacy is concerned, we decided you can do a, a flat slab retaining wall. You can do a rock wall, but then there's a maintenance issue on it because it's right in front of her home. We've decided to go with a ready rock, which are the very large blocks, um, that are used for large detention, or large retention. Um, and, and they, they look beautiful. There's, um, you can get several different designs and, and, you know, stone coloration and everything like that. So that was put across here, not only, um, to create more privacy, but, but also because of the water issues. The water cannot flow this way. The drain that was coming through here and bubbling up into her home, into her yard, is no longer there on this plan. Um, then we, um, have always said that we would put a six-foot fence. The six-foot fence runs the full length of the private drive. Um, and then we are also planting trees here. Um, a, uh, blue-tipped juniper is what we're settling on. I've called the, the city people and I've called nurseries and everything else. They're eight feet in diameter and they're full grown and twelve feet high. So it creates not only, um, additional, uh, privacy, but it also creates sound mitigation. So anybody coming out here with their, with their lights, you know, if they can go over twelve feet, then yes, they'll be an issue. But there are no, there are no issues on that.
So it sounds like lots of the, of the, um, ways you've mitigated are, um, they don't need maintenance. They-
Correct. There's no, no maintenance on, on this, um, at all from their side. And the slope down from the, the retaining wall goes to the road, so it can't flow the other direction. The difficulty I'm having is when you meet the requirements that we've been given and then someone waits three or four months to come in and question, that could be, that could delay you in perpetuity. So how, how do we, um, you know, we've been preparing for this meeting for a long time and spent a lot of money, um, to do this and to mitigate here. Um, for example, we were giving thirty feet of land to Mr. Briggs. That's half of a lot. That's a great deal of money and that was being deeded over to him. Um, so in each of the cases, we have gone the extra mile to do it.
How long does it usually take with a grandma request?
Um, we can respond immediately. As was mentioned, they asked for the plans. I consulted our attorney. Um, he indicated that that wasn't public document at this time. I have no problem. Once my legal counsel tells me it's okay to give them the plans, I'll give them immediately.
Okay, and then we can put it back on our agenda in two weeks.
At this point, we don't have a quorum. We can't take action anyway.
I do have my qualification here because I was told it would not be the plan to even give a request until after final plating. That's what it, and you told me to do.
That, that's what city attorney said to me. So I'd be happy to chat with you as soon as we're done.
When they were just requested, I wouldn't have a problem either. In fact-
If Mr. Prince will give him the plans, he's the owner of those plans, then forgive me.
But I can't, I, yeah, I can't find out tonight and then say, oh.
Well, and then you've, you've been at this for quite a while and I think to-
Long time.
To, if we're going to be fair to them, to be fair to you, I, we, obviously, we can't vote tonight, but I would, I would think we, we do need to set a time on this. We need to say, you know, if, if, once they get it, they've, they've got so many days to look at it, then we're going to, we're going to bring it back to this body and we're going to vote on it. Um, regardless of whatever decision, you know, if they, they agree or not, I think we need to do our part. Um, we've, we've given you the requirements. You've met those requirements. They've been satisfied as far as the city's concerned. Um, and so I, I don't think that we, it, it's fair to you or even the neighbors to, to continue to delay it. So I think that it's, if, if they get them, um, we give them till the next meeting or two, you know, or, or two meetings down the road. But we bring this back in a very timely manner and, uh, then we, we have our final, final decision, final vote on it.
Is it legally possible, and I don't, don't know, can, is it legally possible to give her, them the plans and have them review them prior to the city council and go before city council next week? Is that legally possible?
Uh, it, it has to have our recommendation before it can go to them, doesn't it?
Planning commission does not have a quorum at this time and therefore they cannot send a recommendation to the council.
And so unfortunately, it's going to have to wait. And then, you know, we'll have probably two or three, hopefully a full quorum here. And I don't know if, if you're going to have to go through everything again, you know, the, the explaining and, and the presentation. Um, uh, but I, I think we need to, we need to act on this issue as soon as we can. Um, and, uh, you know, not having a quorum actually, that's, that's, was an unintentional delay, so to speak. But, uh, I think if, it, it gives, it gives time, as long as it's a timely situation for them to look at it. Um, again, I'm not going to weigh ultimately my decision on whether they agree with it or not. I'm going to base my decision on whether I think it's, it's met the conditions. Um, and, and so that's to, to let you guys know that too. It's, it's, and I think all the commissioners are, are going to do that. They're going to, they're going to base their decision on what they think individually and what, if it's meant the requirements and conditions they feel is needed versus what you guys come up with, your recommendations. As far as vacating the, that, that street, I don't think that's really matter for us. That's, I mean, we, we, we've got our task at hand that we're, we've been commissioned with to do. And, and then, you know, I think vacating, if, if, if you guys have issues legal, that, that's beyond us.
The vacation was actually treated last spring by the city council. Of course, contingent upon final approval.
Yeah.
But that was voted four to ones.
Yeah, that's already been done. He, he brought that up as an issue, that that's one of the issues they have a problem with. And so I'm just saying that's, that's, that, it has been done. It's not an issue that we're, we're really going to address. Um, but I, I think the issue is whether or not you've met the conditions and we feel that it's, it's ready for final platting approval. And so I think, um, that's got to happen timely.
I'm very encouraged that the water problem, um, is looking like, uh, it can be so much better with, with, um, the different things that have, have been researched and, yeah.
I'd agree too.
I would hope that-
You moved that drainage so it doesn't go through their property. You've built a, and those are nice walls. Build a nice wall. I mean, if it's going, they've got a twelve-foot privacy, even with the elevation difference. Um, you know, like, I think you've, you've made efforts to try to do it and to, to satisfy the comments. And whether or not they've had time to look at it or, or, you know, you've been meeting with the others, Bartos, for a while. And, you know, they, they are entitled to representation if they want it. But, um, I don't, I think that on their side too, they've got to act quick because we're going to make a decision. We're going to, we're going to vote on this when we get a talk opportunity.
Earlier, but for another situation like this, where Mr. Briggs brought in his attorney and, uh, we met with them in October. And then not until the second meeting did we hear that he wanted two lots there. It was always- It was always maybe one, and then it was two. So we did the redesign, which took more time, but that was after the approval had been done for three months. So we, we ended up actually designing twice through the engineering firm, complete sets of plans. So, you know, all of that, during any of that time, it could have been requested. We could have met with Andy, or with Mr. Thompson and the, and the Taylors, but it's wait till the end, and then ring something up, and then we're delayed again, and it's very, very difficult.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm saying, it's gotta be, it's gotta be timely. We've gotta, we've gotta act on this and make a decision, and, you know, we can't do it tonight, unfortunately now, but, so it's, it's gonna have to be postponed. But that's why I'm saying, it's gotta happen soon. We've, we can't keep on, I don't think we can keep on putting this off. We've gotta act on it, at least, that's my feeling.
I agree, totally. And the next planning commission meeting is, is in just two weeks, right? Two weeks?
To be discussed, but yes.
Typically scheduled for the fourteenth.
And then there's still a city council meeting one week after that.
Right.
Maybe.
Maybe.
So that would, I mean, can't vote on it, but that's what I'd say is, let's, let's bring this back to their next meeting, we'll have a full quorum, and we, we act on it, vote on it, and then it could go to the council the following week, and, and then, you know, let it, let it, let it fall how it, how it falls.
There was a, a concern that the minutes from the city council meeting on June fifteenth were not yet on the website, and I tried it out, and, and that was true. And so there is a draft, and I got a draft so that I could read everything from, I was, I attend, yes, I attended the meeting, but I still wanted to read the notes. And so we can get a draft, but the city council will approve, they have to approve it before it goes up on the website. So that's, that's something that just got missed. And so, thanks for catching that, and I, they're taking care of it.
Are there any other questions for me?
I think you addressed mine. Yeah, you've done a good job.
Thank you.
I'm the Briggs that everybody keeps talking about, that's causing...
We remember you.
Causing all the trouble.
Don't worry, the mystery.
There's a couple of things I'd like to clarify. You know, we have met with Mr. Prince several times, and the reason we decided not to meet with him anymore is I don't feel like he was dealing with us in good faith. Okay? We walked in there, we tried to negotiate, we tried to actually put some of our money into this thing to try and make it work for us and him both. And the end result was, is that's fine as long as we pay half of the complete development costs. Now, I thought that was completely ridiculous. I don't do business like that, and I won't do business like that. I no longer trust anything that's happening here. I've been really discouraged by the whole process. The way it was started was wrong, and it's been wrong the whole way through. With that being said, there is some issues that I'd like to discuss. That access to my property up there, I would strongly urge you to have the city own that. I don't wanna get in...
Have the city what, own?
Have the city, do not vacate that, that right-of-way, so that the city will have the possession of it, so that I don't have to deal with the homeowners association or anybody else when I decide to develop my property. The other thing is, I'd like to know is where the, I've gotta be assured that there's utilities that are someplace that I can hook into. I need to find that out before we agree to anything here. Okay? I don't necessarily want to own that piece of property and pay for it, and pay the taxes on it, and everything else that goes along with it, just to get to my property.
Oh, the flag driveway you're just speaking about?
Yes. The city owns it, the city doesn't have to vacate it. The city should just keep it and let it go through to my property, so that nobody has to deal with each other here. This is as bad as it's gotten. I just don't wanna deal with, with Mr. Prince. I have no faith in the city anymore, unfortunately. Council's really let me down. We, we came in in good faith, we have another plan that runs the road on the east side that makes all the neighbors happy. We presented that, and now that just, that doesn't work for whatever reason. Everybody was in agreement to it. He still gets the five lots. It's a lot cleaner-looking subdivision. We do it like this, and there's, you know, it's just a chopped-up mess, basically. You got one house sitting over there in the low spot, which I'm the one that's lived there for fifteen years, I know what goes on back there, but nobody seems to believe anything that I have to say. So as far as I'm concerned, go ahead and build a house there, and somebody's gonna get water in their basement. But it's, you know, you read it, read online about the PRUD, and it's supposed to fit in the surrounding area, and everybody around there owns an acre or more. All we're asking is, I'm not against development, 'cause I wanna develop my own property. I originally hadn't really wanted to, but this thing has soured me so bad, I wanna develop my property, I wanna sell and get out of here. That's how bad this has gotten. The truth of the matter is, why that right-of-way got moved to get to me, it sounds like we did it all just to make me happy, but the truth of the matter is, is there's irrigation pipe under there that he can't build a house on top of. That's why that got moved. And if you look at it, it's just, it's, like I say, it's a chopped-up mess, and there's no reason to do that, other than somebody's gonna lose a little bit of money. You know, but in the beginning, I was willing to go in there and work with him, and actually put some money into it myself, if I had to, in order to protect my rights. And apparently, the neighbors don't matter. All I keep hearing about is that he meets the minimum specifications, which technically he does. Technically, he's taking care of the problems that I've had the biggest issue with, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's right. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's best for Caseville City or the neighbors that surround there. And I think the neighbors should have a pretty good say in the thing. I just don't understand why it's gotten to this point, but I've lost all faith in the, in the system here. All I can ask is, if that's where that access is to my property, I would, I would hope that the city would keep it, just to stop all this foolishness, you know? He talks about the money he's losing, you know? Amy and I have both lost thousands of dollars hiring attorneys and fighting this thing. That's on us. Besides, all the time, I mean, I own a small business. It costs money for me to take time off to go and meet and do all this stuff, and this has been going on for months and months and months and months. And finally, when, you know, when I get told that, sure, we'll work with you if you'll pay half for everything, that was the final straw, I won't, you know, that's an insult to me. And I don't do business like that, and I will never do business like that. So I just hope that everybody will use a little bit of common sense here and look at this thing, and maybe take a look at the other plan that actually has some flow to it and makes some sense. That's all I ask. Well, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we just take a motion to table it for lack of a quorum? We don't do anything?
Per lack of quorum, a motion couldn't pass.
Okay.
Yeah, we're sorry about that. That was, boy, that was, it was amazing he was even here at all. He came because he knew we didn't have a quorum without him, and so, that stuff.
Pretty much called to the public, we just need reports if you have anything.
Do those, 'cause there's not, they're not action items.
Opening to call the public then to start?
No.
If there are no other public comments on, on other matters for the planning commission, as far as reports or calendar items, as mentioned here, this may be back at the next meeting, which generally would be December the fourteenth, and so we'd want to just, my hope was to discuss with the commission the December calendar, based on the holiday meeting and conflicts that tend to pop up there. I believe the city council currently is planning on meeting on the seventh, possibly the twenty-first, leaving that option open, depending on items that they have. So I don't know if the commission has any concerns with the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth, which would be our typical dates for meeting, frequently the twenty-eighth, and I think has been previously discussed as a meeting that was intended to be, probably passed over per, between New, the Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday. But yeah, there's, now, having the full quorum here, a bit of a tough discussion to know everybody's scheduling, but if there are known conflicts, we can be aware of now, if not, just something we can deal with offline on the specific dates, but for now, the fourteenth is something that the three of you are anticipating being available for, and we would expect that be the next meeting.
Was there a city holiday event that night?
There is.
There is? So you would miss it?
If necessary.
Well, it goes on for a window of time, though, hopefully, the city event?
So do our meetings. Yeah, it would, it would either be there, there is a city holiday party on that night, so one option could be to move things to the twenty-first if the city council's not meeting then. If we're not meeting on the twenty-eighth, that may allow us to accommodate more items that come in during the month of December, and then we'll be back on track in the first part of January. However, I don't know if you have any different indication, Andy, on whether or not the council will or will not be meeting on the twenty-first?
Don't know for sure at this point. There's some items that may need to be addressed on that night, so I would expect at this point that the planning commission should expect to meet on the fourteenth.
Yeah. And that works fine for me.
Okay.
And that would be good, so we meet as soon as possible for this item.
I think here on, all the sides of it, it's all the more reason we need to get this done.
Okay. Anybody want to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.